Do you want to do that all in one motion? Hopefully.
I don't think so.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. This is Delaware County Commissioners' meeting. It's Monday, July 20th, 2020. The time is 9:01 a.m. Let's open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you say July 6th?
Thank you. Donna, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Regan? Present. Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Brooke?
Here.
Okay, we'll go down to the approval of the July 6th, 2020 meeting and July 15th, 2020 special meeting.
I move we adopt.
Did you need to amend? Did you want to amend to the timber?
I was gonna make another. You want to do it now?
You, the version that you have in front of you, I think, has already changed, right, Denise?
Yes.
Okay. So you would be adopting that, yes.
I'm sorry, repeat that, please.
The version that you have in front of you for adoption had already incorporated your changes that you'd requested, Commissioner, so.
They did?
Yeah.
Yeah, I changed them this morning and re-sent it to you on July 6th.
Okay.
For the July 6th meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. Donna, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. Thank you. Contracts and agreements for approval, LPA Consulting Contract Bridge 161. Angie?
This is the construction inspection project for Bridge 161 replacement. This is under review by NDO.
Did they just adopt July 6th?
The 6th and the 15th.
I know, but did they do both of them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That is reimbursable. Set a letting in November of this year.
John?
Yes, I looked at it and the contract was acceptable. There were no real changes to it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the contract in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Excuse me, but I think that on Sherry, the July 6th, you made changes this morning, like at 6 o'clock, and I changed them. And so, but then John said you wanted to amend. I, yes, I was gonna do that. I'd like to do that. Okay, okay, I didn't think. I would like to amend our June 15th minutes to read after the 30 to add the word timber. Right. There's a big difference between.
Okay, so you're making a motion to amend the July?
The June 15th minutes.
The June 15th minutes.
But the mistake was?
The mistake was on the June 15th minutes, I believe.
Correct.
Yes. So you make a motion to amend the June minutes.
The June 15th minutes.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to amend those minutes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
And just for the, so the record's clear, the motion that you made, Commissioner King, for the minutes was both July 6th and July 15th.
Okay.
Okay. Next is Ashton Land Surveyor, Kathy.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Kathy Van Ister, an Ashton Land Surveyor at 325 West Washington Street, Muncie, Indiana. We are bringing a one lot subdivision plat to you. It's called the Slaven Subdivision on 400, County Road 400 East. We're doing this to dedicate the road right away, road frontage, right in front of the property. We have already gone through the platting. We have approval, and we also have had a little variance because the front of the property, the front of the house sits too close to the road, so we have a reduced setback on the front.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have the Body Scanner and Portable X-Ray Scanner. Chief Deputy Stanley?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Stanley, Chief Deputy of the Sheriff's Office. We are looking to apply for a grant through the Federal Cares Act. What the Sheriff's Office would like to do, there is a body scanner that we'd like to apply for. If we were awarded this grant, then we could, it's 100% reimbursable. So if we were awarded this grant, we'd be able to put a brand-new body scanner into the new Justice Center, which the federal government would help pay for, or actually pay for. And to go along with this, we're looking at the purchase of a portable X-ray system, which could be movable throughout the Justice Center, the new Justice Center. That way, it won't be fixed to one position or one room. And I've got quotes for different units, I believe, I've provided with you. The Sheriff and I, we've traveled to numerous facilities throughout the state, looking at the body scanners, and this is the body scanner that we'd like to build on.
It's a great idea.
Makes your work a lot easier and very technical, true.
Yes, ma'am.
For $139,000, it's worth to keep our people safe, and I move we adopt body scanner request.
Are you guys wanting the Commissioners to fund this, or are you guys taking it out of?
Ideally, if the Commissioners could fund it, yes. We could look into some of our funds. I don't know if we would have enough to cover it. I have been in contact with the Federal Cares Act people that's helping us, or helping us out with this, and right now, the turnaround's about a 14-day period. So once the item's purchased, paid for, all the paperwork submitted, approximately 14 days later, the check will be reimbursed to us.
John, could we make the motion pending us finding the money to purchase these items?
Yes.
Because I would rather do that, not knowing right now, you know, where it would come from and just.
Provide, yeah, you could make a motion that would approve this request, subject to finding the money to be reimbursed from the budget someplace.
Sure, we'll have to cut down with Jenny and go over some things. So can you put that in your motion, Sherry?
Yes.
And then I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve upon us locating the money. In a second, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
I will get with Jenny and try to get things worked out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Next is Dussa Consulting Professional Services. Donna, is that you? You have anything to do with that?
No, it's just the new contract for next year that Steve wanted approved.
This is a contract that this consultant's been doing work for the county for a number of years. Jeff Dossit, he's a former auditor, I think, from Montgomery County. He, this is, at least, he was doing it back when I was in office.
Is this the one that the clerk used to bring to us?
No.
Go back on the title, according to?
No, this is, this is from the Auditor's Office to work on the reimbursements for the Auditor's Office.
Something that might have been missed or something.
Donna, has there been any changes?
No, I know he was here last Wednesday, and I know that the amount of money, and I can't remember what Steve showed me now, well exceeded his contract amount that he's bringing back to the county.
Yes, he brings back significantly more. I think the only change is that he raises rates 500 or 1,000 bucks, something like that.
Okay.
That's right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve Dussa Consulting in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. Okay, next is, is Scott Alexander out there? Nope.
No.
Okay. The job description for Chief Information Officer and GIS Coordinator.
This is where we are losing someone in GIS that moved on somewhere else?
Correct. So during COVID, Kyle, come on up. So at the beginning, COVID, to try to get information out to all the citizens of Delaware County and try to keep everybody informed, Kyle did a number of things at EMA, and one of them was the, our COVID site. Do you want to talk about that a little bit, Kyle?
Yeah, so when, when we first started the county response, we set up this hub site that we were able to take all the information that was coming into the county and the various departments and put it in one place. And it became pretty beneficial, and we were able to put a lot of information from the Health Department and the state and federal government into that site quickly and easily and made it easily accessible to the public and the other departments, so.
So along with that, Kyle helped produce the videos that EMA and some of us had done and also kind of stepped up and started watching our Facebook pages and our webpage to try to keep people, again, keep people informed. So with this, I spoke with Kyle, also talked to John, and there has been some changes in the GIS department, but with that, we want to railroad Kyle into doing more duties for us, I guess. But Kyle does an outstanding job, and we do need somebody to monitor the social media pages and our webpage and to try to.
Get more information.
Get more information out to the public, yes. Do you got anything you want to say, Kyle?
Ever since we had the county website, we'll set up years ago, and our social media, we've never really had a person that's been dedicated to it. I've helped out, people in my office has helped out, other departments kind of help out where they can, but there's not been a person that other departments or the public can go to to kind of answer the questions and the messages and stuff that come in, so I'm happy to kind of step up and fill that role.
And I'll be honest, you know, I'm not a whiz at this technology, and my seven-and-a-half years, I still can't find things on our web, so I look forward to you updating it and getting it easier, friendly.
Right, yeah, there's a lot we can do to kind of improve it and get more information out there.
Now, and I did understand that you're gonna have to hire a firm to maybe do some of your work, but.
Right, so since the GIS parcel technician position is vacated and we're under a hiring freeze, we're gonna take some of those funds and move it around so we can have a third-party help with our parcel maintenance duties, just splits and combines.
And do you think the timeline on some of the work might be a day or two later, or how?
It hasn't been determined, but it, from what I saw in some of the quotes, that, yeah, it's within a week, so turnaround on that type of stuff. So it'll be comparable to what it was before.
Thank you, thank you.
Kyle does a great job.
Yeah, we appreciate having him.
And I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the new job description for the Chief Information Officer slash GIS Coordinator in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Absolutely.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. Good job, Kyle. I would say that I would call Kyle when we needed something posted, and just within a, literally within a minute of hanging up, Kyle had it on social media, or had it taken care of. So I just, I appreciate all your work, Kyle, and I'm glad that now we have someone to blame.
Kyle, before you leave.
Thanks.
Before you leave, do we have a page that's showing our curve? Because we see the state, we see the nations on the.
The numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you go to dcema.com, that's the coronavirus hub, and there's a dashboard on there.
Dashboard.
You can go, and it gets updated whenever the Health Department sends us new numbers. And there's graphs and numbers on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, next is the State Justice Institute Grant, Emily Anderson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. So I came to you not too long ago, talking about our eviction mediation program that we're implementing, and we got a $10,000 grant from a community foundation, which was strictly going to mediators to fund that. We're trying to secure more funding because that's gonna be, if you think about it, a normal mediation takes four to seven hours, so that's gonna go through quickly. This is a $50,000 grant that we're gonna go after, but we're also gonna try to ask for funding for other things as well as mediator fees. We're gonna ask that I be compensated because I'm running a whole other program, plus, we're gonna give some funding to Pathstone, who is also working with us. And the reason why we're going after this is because it specifically states that this is for people, or for justice-involved people, for tenants facing evictions. It specifically states that in the grant. So I will tell you that the state is looking at us, they're very excited about our program. I don't think it'll be a problem getting this grant, but I just need your permission to go after the $50,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the grant in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for working on that.
Yeah.
Next is the Emergency Declaration.
Yes, this is a Emergency Declaration 2020-14. This is to continue the emergency declaration based upon the Governor's Executive Order 20-36 that he entered on July 16th. It basically extends the back on track, continues a four-point, stage 4.5. He had also adopted Emergency Executive Order 20-32, which extended the public health emergency to August 3rd. So based upon that, this order is effective until August 3rd, which is our next meeting, and requires that members of the public conduct business in the county building, maintain a social distance six feet at all times, employees required to wear face coverings in public areas, and maintain a social distance of six feet, members of the public are required to wear face masks, and this is based upon your 13A as well, or other covering persons' mouth and nose during the business in the county. It encourages people that have risk, high-risk health conditions to wear masks as well, encourages people to wear masks in the public. Social gatherings of 250 people or more, maintain social distancing, and they must give approval of those from the Health Department pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the declaration in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. I want to make it clear, I know it's in the newspaper a couple of times, it reads kind of like, if you come into the building and you can social distance, you're not required to wear a face mask, but we are requiring the public and our employees to wear face masks while you're inside the county building, so I just kind of wanted to make that clear. Okay, we'll move on to ordinance number 2020-009, amending the text of Delaware County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. Marta?
Yes. This, and actually, I forgot to mention this to Jenny, but this would, this was, went through a public hearing in front of the Plan Commission on July 2nd, so it's like the second reading for this ordinance. And the, it is pretty simple, two things. One is a, currently, there's a permitted use in the farm zone for cemeteries, saying that the site for a cemetery has to be 10 acres, and there had been an inquiry from a farmer who was wanting to know if he could bury himself on the farm, and so this is real simple. We added a clause to that section of the ordinance that says that cemeteries have to be 10 acres, except that for a non-commercial family cemetery, there's no minimum acreage. That's the first part of this. The second part deals with agritourism, and we inserted a definition of agritourism and then basically included that as a permitted use in the farm zone, because we'd frequently get questions about, you know, can we do this, can we do that, such as like school tours, you know, coming out and viewing farm activities, and we believed that it was important to promote agritourism and farming activities and, and spreading the knowledge of what occurs on a typical farm operation. So anyway, the second part of the amendment deals with inserting some agritourism language, and then it talks about allowing that when, registered with the Commissioners. And so I couldn't find the form that I'd made many, many years ago, so I made up a new form for Special Event Registration Form, and this would be used if someone were to register, and the only reason that, the main reason that we would register is so that if someone has a question, then there's a paperwork trail of what's going on at a site, because it could be, it could be a, you know, a fundraiser.
Thank you.
Where they have several people, and the, like, typical conditions would be that they can't walk any county road, and that if they have more than 50 people, that they have to provide sanitary facilities in the form of like portable toilets. Those would be pretty typical conditions, and if, on this form, if you look at it and you see something else that you'd like to be reflected on the form, I can change it. But the idea would be that they register so that if anyone in the police or fire or highway department has a question about what's going on, then we can answer them and say, this is what's going on.
You know, I attended a workshop down at Wayne County one time on tourism, and they were just talking, and about five years ago, how big ag tour is. I mean, it's big.
Yeah, it can be.
And we know that we have a lot of farm stands around here, so appreciate the registration and something we need to promote.
Well, and the, using the registration, like, let's say they're gonna have a, an event, it's like an isolated, one-time event for a moneymaker. There's no reason for them to have to go in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals for variance to allow them to have, you know, a, a event like that. This is a way to keep track of it, put conditions on it if need be, and allow them to have that special event. Now, if, if someone, the way this should work is, if someone comes in and says, well, I want to do this once a month from April to October, that's, that's not the purpose of this. Then you would say, no, you got to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. But this, this is for those isolated events that might occur. So that's the amendment, the basis for this is the amendment to the zoning ordinance, adding permitted uses that deal with agritourism and, and the family cemeteries.
Marta, was there any discussion, or is there anything in the ordinance that requires security at some of these events?
There is not. That could very well be one of those things, like if the, when they're applying to register with the Commissioners, depending upon the event.
Right, depending on the event.
They could say, you have to have security.
Yeah, and they could explain, security's not needed because, and then that could be a criteria for approval.
Right, right.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2020-009.
Not adopt.
Yeah, it'll be a motion to adopt, yes.
Yeah.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt 2020-009 in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yeah.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
And for the purpose of the agenda, that was a second reading approval.
Right.
Okay, ordinance number 2020-010, ordinance for Problem Solving Court. Emily?
Good morning, Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. This is a grant that was applied for by juvenile court. They have a problem solving court out there, like we do have for, serving court for, for veterans and drug court. Donna should have a copy of the specifics for the grant. It specified what they can spend it on, but it's just to help with that program out there. So I just need this fund set up to, for the grant that was awarded.
I'll move.
Emily?
Yes.
Do you need this passed today?
She said no, she doesn't need it right now, so we can just do the first reading today.
The second reading would be August 3rd.
Yes, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Okay, so Sherry made a motion to introduce.
I'll second it.
James, second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2020-011.
This is the fund that I need to set up for that grant that Jason Rogers got for the courts for the PPE supplies, it was $58,000. I know I sent this to you in an email, and I said I don't need it, the rule's suspended, but I, I made a boo-boo, and I actually do need it suspended because I went ahead and asked for some reimbursement on some things that I've already spent, and Donna said I have to get that fund set up because it has to go through the fund and then back to my budget funding. So I would like to get this first reading approved and then the rule suspended if possible.
I'll make a motion for ordinance 2020-011 to introduce.
Second.
We have a motion to introduce ordinance 2020-011. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2020-011.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-011.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for adoption. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate all your work.
I'll get all those, yeah, I'll get all those supplies ordered till we'll be stocked up for fall.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next is Resolutions for Approval, Resolution Number 2020-030. John?
Yes, this is a resolution based upon conversation with the Commissioners that has been drafted, a resolution committing Delaware County to equal treatment of all people, and I'll just read the resolution. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Delaware County have been troubled by the various events that have occurred throughout the United States, which have left a lasting and profound sense of sorrow that have recently occurred, and whereas Delaware County, State of Indiana have had instances over many years of injustices and inequities that have occurred based upon racial, societal, and other bases which are not proper or appropriate, and whereas racial intolerance, prejudice, or decision-making that is based upon any characteristic or trait other than merit are not welcome nor have any, have no place in Delaware County, and whereas the Board of Commissioners want to encourage an inclusive community, build on trust and dedication, to stand up against all forms of racism or prejudice, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of Delaware County are committed to working against the scourge that racism creates and the ensuing damage and destruction that prejudice causes in Delaware County, and to ensuring that the rights of every person who lives, works, and visits Delaware County are protected, and whereas the Commissioners recognize and acknowledge the existence of racism and prejudice that occurred in Delaware County, and vow to reaffirm the county's commitment to all the principles, to the principles that have, that many have fought for and believed in, that all people are created equal, and that all people, regardless of race, religion, sexual orientation, gender, and national origin, are to be provided opportunities in the community. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Commissioners of Delaware County that one, Section 1. The Board of Commissioners declare that all people in the county are entitled to the basics of human rights and dignities, and further affirm Delaware County's commitment to ending disparities based on race, religion, sexual orientation, gender, and national origin. Section 2, the Delaware County Commissioners commit to working with its employees, contractors, vendors, suppliers, and all members of the community to understand and consider the impact of the decisions and policies based upon. impact of the decisions and policies based upon improper factors such as race, religion, sexual orientation, gender, and national origin create inequities in the community. Section three, the Board of Commissioners are committed to moving our entire community forward in such a way that events similar to the ones that transpired in the past few weeks and in the past history do not keep recurring and continuing the cycle of division and conflict. Section four, the Board of Commissioners encourage all governmental units in the county in East Central Indiana to conduct its own commitment to removing disparities and situations which foster division because they are based upon race, religion, sexual orientation, gender, and national origin.
Very good.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2020-030.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the resolution and a second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
I would also like to have the consensus of the Commissioners that this be an amendment to the personnel handbook, that we put this in the, in the handbook as its own section.
Front page maybe, or first, toward the front.
Yes.
James made the motion to approve.
Second.
And Sherri seconded, rule call.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. John, thank you for your work on that. We appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, department heads or elected officials?
Robert Jesse with Delaware County Highway Department. We have a truck, a bucket truck, that we have taken out of service and purchased a newer one. The town of Selma has expressed a great interest in that truck for changing light bulbs and so forth around town. So with the Commissioner's blessing, I think it would be best for us to donate that truck to the town of Selma and let them get what remainder of use is left in it.
And I, no, I've talked with Tim Smith, who's on Selma's council, and he's also mentioned that he'll work with other small towns if they need a bucket truck to work with them so they can use it also. So I'd make a motion that we donate the bucket truck to the town of Selma.
Second that.
A motion to donate the truck to Selma and a second. Rule call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
We'll draft a resolution for both the Commissioners and Selma to beg the donation and accept the donation.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Robert, what did you purchase?
We just purchased a newer.
So is this the?
It was used, it was a used truck, but it'd been completely gone through, new motor, and it was time to update.
Is this the one that goes out and does the brushing?
Yes.
And so are we going to be able to keep up on that because we've had so many complaints?
We're doing our best, let's put that way.
And I thought we resolved the one issue out there by Inzlo Road, south of Inzlo. But I got on my emails and I found that we had someone unhappy.
It was taken care of.
Or the letter to the editor. So crossed in the, I wondered.
It was taken care of.
Yeah, because we actually got a phone call and Jenny sent us where the address was.
Well, I thought we had it.
For getting that done.
Maybe the letter's been laying downtown. Yeah, and I had never, I had not gotten any calls at all.
That was the first time that Jenny sent it to us that I even knew anything about it.
Thank you, Robert, for getting it taken care of.
Thank you.
I thought they did, but I just, the, the letter acted like we were aware of it and I was not.
Good morning. I just want to thank, on behalf of the courts and the judges, thank you for funding that implicit bias webinar. We had like pretty much 100% attendance. It was mandatory for the courts, as you know. There was two people that could not attend, so they're going to be attending the one that you're offering. I do want to encourage that everyone participate in that. It was very informative and makes you really think about things. But I do just want to extend a thank you for funding that. We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other department head or elected official? Okay, we'll go down to the monthly, weekly reports. You guys both seen the weights and measures report?
Mm-hmm.
Payment of claims, $3,556,178.42.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the payment of claims and a second. Rule call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
All right, at this portion of the meeting, we'll take public comments. Those of you who have signed up, I'll call you by name as you signed up. Kevin Nolan?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Kevin Nolan, 5408 Northmore Road. I wanted to thank you guys for, one, again, the implicit bias training, funding, and encouraging all county employees to take that. I think that's really important. And so I appreciate you guys providing that, that funding for, for county employees. And I also want to thank you, especially Sherri, and I got a little bit of chance to talk to, to James, Commissioner King, today for taking the systemic racism issue seriously and coming up today and making a strong statement against systemic racism and committing to examining policies and doing what's needed to fix the discrepancy in, in results of policies. And so, and I know a lot of people get caught up in, I'm not racist, and that they don't see themselves as racist and what, yes, individual racism is an issue, but we also, the thing that, especially here, we can address is the policy, the policies that have a racist effect. And so I am very happy to see, I wish I could see the, the full language of it, but the reading sounded like there was a lot that was covered and it seems to go past what the Muncy Resolution did as well. And I look forward to seeing actions that come out of, of looking at that resolution and incorporating that into the decision-making process. And I also want to, thank you. So thank you for, thank you for talking with me about that. Thank you for working through these issues and making a strong public statement. And now I lost where I was going with my, with my next, my next point. Oh, and so, you know, we are lucky here, as I think I said in my, my emails to you guys, that we do have a university here that is committed to community-engaged impact. And we have expertise, and so we can, we have the ability to, with all the data that the Sheriff's Office is compiling, and the Prosecutor's Office is compiling, to examine that and look really hard for where those biased effects are, and then use the expertise of the Criminal Justice Department at Ball State, Sociology Department, several other departments to, to identify policy changes that can reduce and eliminate those discrepancies. So I, I'm very grateful that you guys passed that today and, but that, I hope that this is just the beginning of the process. It's going to be a lot of, a lot of hard work over a long period of time to dig in and really find where those local things are. We see all these patterns nationally and know a lot about the things that affect those patterns.
Sir, your, your three minutes is up. Could you, could you wrap up?
Yes, I just, I, I hope you guys, I thank you for your, your work, and I hope you will commit to doing the, the hard work in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nolan, I look forward to sitting down with you and discussing some of these issues.
Thank you for your willingness to talk, I appreciate it.
Next is Wendy.
Pazlikie.
Yeah, I'm not going, sorry. Could you state your last thing, please, Ms.?
Sure, I'm Dr. Wendy Pazlikie from the Ball State Criminal Justice Department. And first, I also want to commend the Commissioners for unanimously adopting this and being willing even to put it in the handbook. Thank you so much for your commitment. I also want to state my support as a criminal justice scholar to helping you pursue this consistent action, to pursue investigation of racial inequality, especially in the local criminal justice system. Policing and law enforcement is my specific research area. And so recently I've been working on a paper about community-oriented policing. And based on recent statistics, we know that the large majority of police departments have a community-oriented mission statement. But when you actually look at their behaviors, very few have active policies to engage with the community. A lot of them even take community-oriented policing to mean zero tolerance or broken windows style policing. And so the first reason I bring this up is just a reminder that resolutions and commitments are only as good as the actions behind them, and those have to be the right kinds of actions. The reason I also bring up broken windows style policing is because the authors of this theory recognize that this particular style of policing could be used to target black and brown communities. But then they go on to say that they trust that this won't happen. And this was in the 1980s, the authors assumed that we were a post-racial society. Today, we have the opportunity to look back and see that the zero-tolerance style policing that came from broken windows theory, along with the war on drugs, led to significant overpolicing of black and brown Americans who then experienced far heavier sentences because of policies like the Anti-Drug Abuse Act, three-strikes laws, and other similar policies. And so the reason I bring all of this up is because none of these policies explicitly mentioned race. They were very race-neutral or color-blind in the way that they were written. And so glancing at them, especially as a white American, your first thought could be that, oh yeah, they're equal, you do the crime, you do the time, you know, race wasn't targeted, so it's okay. But we know that these had a significant negative impact on communities of color. And so this means that at the local level, I'm really excited that you guys have resolved to examine every policy and practice, regardless of how neutral it seems, to identify where the cracks are in the system that are leading to further racial inequality. I've been encouraged, recently I've been hearing that there's been recent movement by the Sheriff's Office and the Prosecutor's Office to assemble and examine data. And additional necessary data that I think should be examined are bail-setting decisions, charging decisions, and parole and probation revocation decisions. These are broad areas of examination, but they're good starting points. And I would recommend regular annual review, since this commitment is a long-term process, as you, as you all expressed. Consistent, transparent evaluation is needed for detecting and then addressing injustices in the system. And so, again, I thank you for staying strong in your commitment to doing this, and I support you in your work and for deeply engaging in this, because only by doing so can we move towards a more racially equitable system in Delaware County. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Wendy, I also look forward to setting down the meeting with you.
Mr. Cameron Grubbs?
Thank you, Commissioners, Cameron Grubbs. First, I want to give a shout-out to Kyle and the GIS Department as well. They have, I have long stated that they are a bright spot in our county government in being, helping to be transparent with what we do. And so I appreciate Kyle, and he's always been approachable. And he and Brian Preston both have really been amazing in trying to communicate information out for the county. So I wanted to recognize them. I also would like to thank you for the resolution that you just passed. I appreciate that. I think that that is a great first step to take. I think that I would urge to kind of continue the conversations, to, especially public ones, to, to have public conversations with the community, to kind of engage them. I even think that maybe looking at the, I know the city has a Human Rights Commission, or that may not be the right C-word for it, but the, but I would like to see the county try to, to work something like that in, you know, because it, it covers so much more than just race. The, I'd also, oh, the, I, as far as, you know, what, what our community has done in the past, speaking of the GIS Department, Brian Preston had made a map that basically pointed out all the plaits and the neighborhoods that actually have racist language, like the Mississinawa Heights off 67. The ownership and occupancy of the lots in said addition shall be forever restricted to members of the Caucasian race. And if a person not a member of the Caucasian race shall occupy or attempt to occupy a part of the addition, such occupancy may be enjoined by any court of competent jurisdiction on petition of any person residing in the addition. That language is in many neighborhoods and many plaits. Now, it's, it's not enforceable because of law since, but I think that, that kind of gives you an idea of where we were at as Muncy in Delaware County, and, and I think that we should really work to try and, and change those. Lastly, I just want to throw out that, you know, that Indiana just recently reported that the, pretty much the same maximum as what they had back in April for COVID. A mandate for masks has to be coming at some point. I really would like to see Delaware County take a lead on that. But if not, then I'd like to urge the county to kind of be making sure that we're taking public steps to make sure that we're planning for when that mandate does come. Are groups able to have, do they have what they need in order to continue to function to provide for the people of Delaware County? So I would like to urge that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, no, that was all, that was all we had. Have you seen anything, John?
I was just looking at that. Hang on a second. I answered a couple of questions. Somebody had a question about wastewater money, I didn't know what that meant, so.
Okay.
Did nothing really.
Okay, all right. All right, with no further business, I entertain a motion for recess.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion to recess and a second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. Thank you, everybody.